Welcome to a special meeting of the Glendale City Council on May 17. Mr. Kosakian, roll call please.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Barbara Peddian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Your report please.
Agenda for the May 17, 2016 special meeting, a special public meeting of the City Council, was posted on Friday, May 13, 2016, on the Bolton Board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And Mr. Ochoa, I think you have an announcement that would like to hear.
Yes ma'am, regrettably, we don't have with us today our consultant from Kaiser Marston Associates that did the economic analysis on item four in your agenda, the amendment to the RFP for Rockhaven Adaptive Reuse. So we're asking council to continue that over till next week, the 24th, in the afternoon, and we will have someone from Kaiser Marston here.
Thank you very much.
And other folks in the audience for that item.
Right. You'd like to stay, you're more than welcome to. Next item, please.
Item one is proclamation designating May 15 through the 21st, EMS Week.
Thank you. And I have a proclamation for EMS services. Hi. I'll read the proclamation and then I'll let you say a few words.
Okay.
Great. Proclamation reads, "Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas EMS plays a critical role in public outreach and injury prevention and is evolving in its role as an important member of the healthcare community, and whereas first responders, emergency medical technicians and paramedics stand ready to provide compassionate, life-saving care to those in need of 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas the members of EMS teams, both career and volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education in their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of EMS practitioners by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, I therefore, Paula Devine, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 to 21st, 2016, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme EMS Strong Call to Care, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities." Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yes and no, hopefully not.
Hope not. Yes, right. Right.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, city staff, my name's Vince Raffino. I am the interim deputy chief for the Glendale Fire Department, and I am very honored to be standing in front of you representing our EMS, portion of our EMS team. He did say that hopefully we wouldn't need them, absolutely, but if you did, these would be the individuals you would want responding. Just to name a couple individuals that may be here today, representing USC Verdugo Hills Hospital is the nursing, director of nursing, Ms. Jane Peterson, if she's here. Our EMS, EMT coordinator Nancy Russen. Truck 20, excuse me, Truck 21 and Engine 21 crews are here today. Going on with the little factoids about the EMS section, annually, every year, we're increasing our call load approximately 4% from the previous year. Last fiscal year, we had approximately a little over 19,000 emergencies we responded to, with a little over 16,000 of those being EMS. Some of the things we accomplished this past year, we hired 18 new ambulance operators. They're the individuals, the EMTs, who ride out in our ambulances every day. We've just graduated five new paramedics from paramedic school, and we currently have three more in paramedic school right now, with approximately 100 paramedics that are responding out in all nine districts, not 100 each day, but a total within the city. Every day, we have a minimum of two paramedics in every district of the city responding out every day. Some projects that we have going on, we have alternate destination. That's a great program that we're providing for the city and our people that we serve. What this allows, if they, instead of going into the emergency room, they go to an alternate destination, an urgent care, which what happens, it sees them quicker, sees a doctor quicker, and it costs our community members less by taking them to an alternate destination. Also, we have our community paramedic. We have designated one paramedic from the city that visits patients that are discharged from our hospitals. They visit them at their home, making sure they're getting the correct care, they're taking their medicines, so they're not readmitted back into the hospitals. Some of the other things that we've accomplished this year, we're in partnership with Glendale Wilson Terrace, Glendale Memorial, USC, USC Verdugo Hills, UCLA and the GPD. What's going on with GPD, GPD is sending some of their individuals to get them EMT-trained, and they're able to respond out and provide emergency services also. GPD officers are going to now be riding along and getting their continuing education and some of their training with our firefighters out in the field. And beginning in August, the Glendale Fire Department is going to be sponsoring an EMT class through UCLA, and it's going to be teaching some of our youth to be emergency medical technicians. And this is going to be almost like a farm league for looking for new recruits for firefighter and EMTs within our community. But then again, I would like to say thank you very much for providing us this proclamation for EMS Week, and I'm very honored to be representing the Glendale Fire Department. Thank you.
Comments from council?
Just, this is an amazing team, and not only do you provide excellent services to the community, you're always finding innovative ways to deliver those services efficiently, which is our task for the rest of the day, is we do budgeting. So I want you to know that you're appreciated by this council, and I think I speak to everyone, not only in the excellent services you provide, but also in the innovative programs, like the critical care program that you're constantly innovating. And as someone who once did have to use your services years ago, before I was on council, I can tell you that I've never felt safer than when I had a group of Glendale emergency medical technicians in my house taking care of me. So, thank you.
I just want to, did you want to say something, Mr. Peddian?
Oh, I mean.
Okay. I just want to thank you all. I know with the aging community that we have, you are in more and more demand than ever. I was out this weekend, and I saw, I don't know how many times, the paramedics racing somewhere. So, thank you for being there for all of us. You are valued by this community, and we all thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, Mr. Kosakian.
Item number two is a proclamation designating Public Works Week.
For Public Works? Is anybody left out there on our streets working? No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Fabulous. I'm glad to see all of you.
And I should note, as you get ready to read the proclamation, madam, we've decided to, with the council's permission, to have any proclamation recognizing employees be done at your afternoon session. That way, you actually get to see the people that are delivering the level of service. And so, that's why you see all these folks very proudly, ready to accept a proclamation from them.
Well, I'm proud to be doing this, so thank you for all the work that you do as well, and I'll read the proclamation for you. Whereas public works projects and services are critical to the growth and quality of life in the City of Glendale and are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, through the efforts of our Public Works Department, Glendale remains a safe and comfortable community in which to reside. And whereas the support of informed citizens is vital to the efficient maintenance and operation of the city's infrastructure, including operations such as maintenance services, fleet management, engineering, facilities management, traffic and transportation, and integrated waste management. You do a lot. Whereas the employees of the Public Works Department are committed to providing daily infrastructure services in a quality manner, whereas a well-planned, designed and maintained municipal infrastructure is vitally dependent upon a team of people dedicated to professional excellence, customer satisfaction, and who strive to accomplish their everyday tasks efficiently, effectively, and with accountability to the community they serve. Now therefore, I, Paula Devine, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim May 15 through the 21st as National Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations in the City of Glendale to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing for our local infrastructure, and to recognize the contributions which Public Works officials make every day to the betterment of our residents' health, safety, comfort and quality of life. Thank you. National Public Works. And while he's bringing that down, I- Daniel Berber, please. I want to say that I always get excellent emails complimenting all of you on the work that you're doing, so that's something that you should be really proud of. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council and staff. My name is Myrna Martinez, and I work for the Public Works Administration Department. On behalf of the Public Works Director and the entire Public Works Department, we are happy to receive this proclamation. Joining me are the 2015 Public Works Outstanding Employee of the Year winners. The gentleman who just received the proclamation is Daniel Berber. He works at the Integrated Waste Department. We have Neri Villagrande from Maintenance Services, Michael Mora from Fleet Services, Ruel Villaluna from Engineering, and Paul Mottl from Facilities Management. And these are just exceptional employees as a small representation of all the hard men and women working in our department who are proud to serve the Glendale community. And I would like to have Daniel Berber just come up and thank you for this award.
Thank you all. As the, this is great, I'm kind of speechless right now. I want to thank the City of Glendale, first of all. Man, you guys-
We rock. You can just say, "We rock." We rock.
Not a real big speaker, but thank you.
Thank you.
We would also like to invite the City Council for our Public Works Breakfast, which is occurring this Thursday. This is a breakfast that we do every year to show our appreciation to our Public Works employees, and our breakfast would be from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Thank you all.
Where are you having it? Where will it be?
At the Public Works Yard, 541 West Chevy Chase. We hope to see you there.
Six o'clock will be there for us.
Maybe you will, but I won't. Thank you so much. Thank you. 6:00 AM. I don't think I'll make that. Next item, please. Well, let's give them a chance to, back to work. And I was serious, I do get a lot of positive feedback on our Public Works Department. Okay, next item.
Madam Mayor, the next item is Director of Finance, Budget Study Session Number Three for Fiscal Year 2016/17, Budget Recap, Citywide Fee Schedule Updates and Potential UUT Loss Impacts. This is a presentation.
Okay. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes ma'am, this is the third and concluding study session for the 15, or I'm sorry, the 16, 17 fiscal year budget upcoming. From here, if, depending council's direction and questions today, we will have the charter required budget hearing next Tuesday evening, the 24th, and ultimately, we shoot for an adoption on the 14th of June. What you have, and what is available to the public, is in this booklet here, a listing of every department's strategic goal for all of our aligned departments, as well as the key performance indicators updated through the third quarter. I would encourage the public to do what the council has done by way of your council goal setting earlier this spring that actually kicked off this entire process, and look through all of these department strategic goals, because these are effectively the outcomes that we are seeking to achieve and build upon. The KPIs are much more the outputs. And so, to the extent that we have these goals, we have these key performance indicators, it's important, I think, for us to take a look at the cascading relationship between what the five of you, as elected by the community, say and envision, and how that is manifest in those goals, in those KPIs. And so thus, it starts off with our City Council priorities. These are the 10 priorities that you can tie all of these goals, all of these KPIs, back to. Beginning first and foremost, the fiscal responsibility, exceptional customer service, economic vibrancy, informed and engaged community, safe and healthy community, balanced quality housing, something that this council has talked a great deal about, community facilities and services, infrastructure and mobility, which has been the hallmark of this past calendar year, as well as the last fiscal year. And increasingly, you see an emphasis on the whole person by way of focusing on arts and culture, and last but certainly not least, sustainability, as we look towards projects at Grace and Power Plant, approaching the renewable portfolio standards GWP has to comply with, and our zero-waste program in Public Works, who you just saw here under the Public Works Week. But again, these priorities are the policy statements that guide everything else that we do and all the resources that we expend in the course of a year. Actually, this is not the most recent PowerPoint presentation, I apologize. If you were to look at the handout that is in front of you, however, I think it's important that the council also take note of what is there on slide number six, the Principles of Compensation Management. Now, council has approved these principles over the last several years, but this council, being a new team altogether, has yet to see these goals, or rather, these principles. And effectively, what they do is provide a rationale for what is arguably the single most significant expenditure of those resources, the employees that you have, because we are not a manufacturing firm, we are a service company. We deliver services, and thus, a major part of our expenditure is our people. And so, when you have people, you need to manage that cost and all the cost drivers associated with that. What you see in this document, as we have gone forward over the last several years, are again, statements of policy that the council has adhered to, that you see reflected in a lot of the budget documents that we have. Things like, "We will maintain a structural balance in our finances." Things like, "We will pay the average but expect exceptional customer service from above-average employees," and oftentimes, really exceptional people altogether. When you look at the soft salary caps, if you will, within our total expenditures, as well as our general fund expenditures, as well as the staffing ratios for management versus non-management costs, all embodied, all reflected in those Principles of Compensation Management. So again, that's something that we view as a living document, and I want to make sure that the council and the community are aware of that. Certainly, this presentation will be available online, oh, there you go. That's what happens when we have too many versions of the presentation floating around. I won't reread all of this, but I explain most of it to you. The idea that we calibrate compensation for classifications at the average of the comparable cities, again, that notion that we pay the average and expect exceptional execution of performance, looking at equity within the organization, and making sure we're paying people the right amount for the right job. And what this does ultimately is contain what that cost driver of people is. It gives us a rhyme and reason, so that when we sit down with our partners across the negotiating table, when it's time to negotiate contracts, there are, there is a foundational document that we refer back to, that everyone understands what the rules of engagement are, and what is in the realm of possibility, and what is not in the realm of possibility. And it seeks to be fair with everyone, recognizing that at the end of the day, as you see in the principle number two, all elements of, all elements of compensation, salary as well as benefits and pension, are based on the city's ability to pay. We can all want many, many things, but if the city can't afford to do it over the long horizon, the sustainable actuarial horizon that we have to adhere to, then it does nobody any good. And too often, I think, there are city councils, in my humble opinion, that will not adhere to that discipline that you have done, and councils before you have done, to make sure that we are here for the long-term adding value to those, for those residents. So, let's talk just a little bit about what that looks like, the animation, if you will, of those principles and those priorities. This is a slide that you saw last week, and again, what I want to point out here is, when you look at the, Bob, you can move the cursor around, because it doesn't show the little red dot, along the full-time authorized positions to the actual filled positions, as you move from '07, '08, you see that in '11, '12, '12, '13, those two years, we dropped a significant number of positions, to the tune of about $1.9 million worth of separation incentives and early retirements. And in doing so, dropped the overall payroll of the city significantly, because what you see below, along total salaries, you see that drop in actual salaries from 1.667 to 1.52 in fiscal year 1213. The other takeaway that I would provide to you is, you see at the end of that chart, on the right-hand side of that chart, the 155 million, the 164 million. Now, it's important to understand that while everything to the left of those two columns are actual numbers, these are our projections for the estimated 1516 year, as well as the proposed budget. The 164,212 is not a number that is a hard, actual number, that's the budgeted number. If history holds, and the vacancies that we have on the books were to continue, just in the normal course of things, the regular attrition that goes on in the life of the organization, you would see that our estimated actual for the coming fiscal year in terms of salaries and benefits will be well below what you see in '07, '08. And while we have dropped a number of positions, we also have dropped a considerable amount of salary, and at the same time, still doing much of the same work that we had been doing before the Great Recession with many, many fewer people. That's a credit to you, that's a credit to the technology that we are beginning to employ, that's a credit to the permission that you've given us to streamline processes and allow folks at all rungs of the organization to make decisions. It was uncanny. Getting ready for this budget presentation, I was looking at the presentations from fiscal year 1213, and many of the things that we talked about then are the things that we're seeing and doing today. And again, it's a credit to this council, although people have come and gone from this council, the culture has endured, and that culture has brought us to this position of structural balance.
Madam Mayor, while you're at the 60,000-foot level, briefly, can you tell us what happened to our, what went wrong with our neighbors, our neighbor next door?
Well, when you-
Shall not be named.
Who shall not be named. Many cities, they had done what this council did not do, and previous councils did not do, by a way of getting into more and more exotic pension programs, pension formulas, little adders onto what those pension formulas would yield. The cost of a number of cities began to do a defined benefit, if not an outright promise on retiree medical. All those cuts, or all those costs came, and when the recession came, while they did make some modest cuts, they didn't make nearly the dramatic and strategic cuts that you made, and as a result, they began living on their reserves. So, while they have still more, many more, hundreds more full-time positions on their books than Glendale does, at the same time, they have driven their undesignated fund balance, their savings account, if you will, down by half. And they really are trying to struggle now with what happens on a going-forward basis. You don't have that problem, and that's, it wasn't easy, but it wasn't by accident either.
Can I ask a question? Is that it? Thank you. And correct me if I'm wrong, tell me if I understand this correctly. Total salaries in the actuals in '07, '08 were 164 million?
Yes, ma'am.
And projected in 1617 is 164 million?
And that's if we had every position filled, which generally, we're going to have anywhere from a 9 to 5% vacancy rate. People come, people go.
Then, I guess my question is, if you can explain, what have we gained from the incentives and getting, if the salaries are remaining the same, the budget salaries are remaining the same?
In the normal course of things, costs have gone up, and I would encourage you to look at the net PERS cost line. At the left-hand side in '07, '08, it's 20.8 million. The estimated for the coming fiscal year is almost double, at 37 million. Had you not dropped all of those positions, you would be like the cities described by Mr. Najarian, trying to figure out how you're going to pay that bill. But because you've been willing to make those cuts, you're able to make that payment, able to make that cost, and still be competitive and relevant in the market. That is the major takeaway from this slide.
Because I'm still seeing a rise in PERS net cost?
PERS net cost, which you have no control over.
Right.
Right? And if, even if, even if you only looked at the salaries line, in nine years' time, just the time value of money and CPI going forward, you would expect that number to rise from 164.9 million dollars, just by one or 2% a year, whatever that CPI might be. And in fact, if you spent every personnel dollar in the coming fiscal year that's budgeted for, your personnel cost would be flat over nine years. That is rather remarkable. And if you, if you actually apply the, because the 164.9 is an actual number, not a budgeted number. If you use the anticipated actual from 1617, that number is probably going to be closer to 150 million dollars. In nine years' time, you actually brought compensation, not compensation, but rather the cost of compensation, and held it down. That is, that is remarkable for a government agency in particular, let alone any organization. But when you look at the total benefits line, you do see that increase, and that's the net PERS cost. So, every now and again, council members have asked from the dais, well, you know, how are other cities able to do it? They're living on reserves, they are not funding infrastructure, they are doing, they're deferring the payment that would fly in the face of your Principles of Compensation Management, that, you know, first and foremost, that shall be structurally balanced. Does the city have an unfunded liability with PERS? Absolutely. And it will for some period of time, but the actual cost, the annual cost that comes to the city, is incorporated into every one of your, every one of your fiscal years going forward, as you look at the general fund forecast. And soon, relatively soon, you will see that the unfunded liability with PERS will be erased through the reforms in pensions that have been done both by this council, as well as the state, by the cost sharing that's been implemented with all of our bargaining groups, and just through the normal attrition that you see among the retirees. What that means is that you will, as PERS rates begin to flatten out, when you look at fiscal year 1920, 2021 and 2122, be able to reprogram back into the, into services those freed-up dollars as the PERS rates flatten out. Again, that's, that is a long-term business plan, but it's been one that this council has adhered to very diligently. You should be very proud.
A question, just a follow-up question. I don't know if I'm reading these numbers wrong, or what have you. In '07, '08, we had 1,936 employees. I know the PERS cost went up, I'm just looking at the salaries. It was 164,126,000. And in 1516, we had 15- And in '15, '16, we had 1,575 employees?
On the books, right.
Right. So, it was 155 million dollars, which is at $9 million less than '07, '08, with 411 fewer employees.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Okay. In '07, '08, with 1,986 employees, our salaries were 165 million dollars on.
Right.
In '15, '16, we had 1,575 employees last year, and our salaries were 155 million dollars.
That's correct.
So, there's a $9, $9 million less, $9 million difference, but we had 411 less employees.
You had 411 less employees, and I think you would look at the 1436 below the 1,575, because those are the actual filled positions, not just the numbers on the books. So, you had, you, you had closer to 550 fewer employees-
No, it's less.
And, and paying $9 million less, almost $10 million less in salary.
Filled positions in 2007, '08 were-
Seventeen, seventeen-two.
Seventeen, seventeen-two.
Correct.
And '15, '16 was 1436, so it's less than 300, almost 340 positions.
With about a $10 million savings, that's right, sir.
So, with $10 million savings.
Right, and that's why I say if you, the 164 that you see budgeted for '16, '17 is a budgeted number, everything to the left of that is an actual number, because you will carry vacancies.
And that's, that's where my question is. With budgeted number of 1,400 filled position, 1,436, we are back about $9 million more than last year on salaries. I know that the, the salaries, if they go up two percent a year from '07, '08, it would be like 20% more. Is that where, where that difference is?
No, I, again, I think the difference is that you're looking at a 164 that's, that's budgeted.
Right.
Our anticipated actual will probably be less than 150 million dollars, about 150 million dollars, based on our historical vacancy rate. As people retire, people leave, people come, they start at different salary steps.
So, next year, in our, in our budget study, we will see-
You will see the actual.
150 million dollars or less-
Yeah.
With about 400, with about 300 less employees, so that will balance out.
That's correct, sir.
And plus, the salaries increase like two percent a year, which is normal. So, that's where that difference comes.
Well, I mean, I would tell you that until this year, you've, you have, in terms of COLAs, we haven't increased those salaries. This will be the first year that you have a three percent cost of living for GMA, GCA, and they have to give back one percent towards cost sharing on the PERS. Again, discipline, diligence, and partnership. That, that has been the hallmark of what you've been able to do, and why you can look at this and say, you've kept costs in alignment. Those costs that are within your control, you absolutely kept them in control.
One last question. So, if it's budgeted 164 million, and it will be like, say, 150 million, that 14 million goes back to the general fund, what happens to that?
That'll-
Citywide.
Across the entire organization, yes, not just the general fund. So, this is everything, everybody.
So, it goes back to the-
Just go back to GWP, go back to SWEAR, go back to-
Just unspent budget.
Right.
Thank you.
So, again, the five-year forecast, we try to look at, at the horizon, taking stock of all of our costs, you see, again, the cost drivers is pension, the flattening out that occurs in 2021, '21, '22, and then so on, before, on the horizon, you begin to see a drop-off that is commensurate with the spike during the increase in the wake of the Great Recession. So, again, you've ensured what the out-years look like to make sure that you are sustainable, that you are balanced, and in the interim, through cost sharing and through cost control, you'll be able to make it through. Okay, so, you've seen, you've seen those slides, you've seen these slides, and just again, the, the takeaway, a great deal of stability overall, but you see movement of some funds, in the case of, for example, community development, they are taking back the, the code enforcement function, and we have collapsed the economic development program in its entirety, entire fund balance, coming into the Department of Community Development, hence the, the large increase there. The, the other increases that you see in all of these numbers are generally offset by the decrease that you see in public works. So, again, the idea of being able to control costs is, first step is identifying cost, and, and the building maintenance program, whereas that cost had been all housed in the Public Works Department, we are making departments responsible largely for the maintenance of their own facilities, charging them back for that work from the Facilities Maintenance Department. And as we have seen in liability insurance, as we have seen in fleet maintenance, making the departments accountable for those costs makes them generally much trimmer and focused only on that which they need. So, what you see here is an overall increase of about 6.6, but it really is a reflection of a very small amount of program enhancement. You know that we are putting about a million dollars into street resurfacing, we're putting several hundred thousand dollars back into community services and parks by way of some limited program restoration, and some M&amp;O funding into the fire department as well as we outfit the, the scheduled replacement of a fire engine. All in, we are looking at a fiscal year budget and general fund of about 195 million dollars for the coming year. Looking to all of our other funds, we went through each one of these subcategories, special revenue, debt service, capital improvements, enterprise funds, internal service funds, and you know the programs and projects that are being covered by all of those. You see the, the major increase in CIP funds, the capital improvement funds, up 11 million dollars. Within that, 11.6 million dollars is the 16 million dollars that the city council has appropriated as part of the Development Impact Fee Strategic Plan that you approved earlier this year. So, there will be a significant investment in quality of life for our residents, particularly in the central part of the city.
Quick question for you regarding street improvement funds. We said we are allocating a million dollars extra. Do we have an estimate as to what is it that we need to make it even better? I mean, next five years, what is the, the budget that we should have-
Sure.
To, to have really a Class A streets, if you will?
The pavement management index that you reviewed earlier this year indicated that we would put in, we would expand about 1.6 million dollars, I'm sorry, 1.3 million dollars, I believe, in street resurfacing. So, this million plus other money that's in the street fund will maintain us at the level that we're at right now. In order to push the needle forward, it's going to be something north of 1.3 million dollars. So, at this point, with the way that gas tax is allotted and, and collected in this country, where it's a flat number of cents per gallon as opposed to a rate, so it grows with CPI, the, generally speaking, we'll get money from either, if there is an R2, we would hopefully get greater local return that way, through the MTA, and through general fund appropriation by way of the city council.
Yeah, because we have a 21% increase in public works, I understand that we, we're asking the different departments to take care of the rest of it. Okay, thank you.
Last week, we went over fees, and so, these are the items that had come up in discussions with city council. There was the convenience fee for credit card service. We went back and forth on this, and unfortunately, I don't know that there is a way to bifurcate this 2.5% convenience fee on different customer classes. If we charge one, we need to charge all, and if it, if it helps the council with this at all, a lot of our GWP customers that you would seek to protect, I have to tell you, many of them don't pay with a credit card, many pay cash, many pay check, and come into the counter. We actually have quite a number of our customers that pay at the window at the, the GWP facility. What we are seeing is increasingly folks who have large purchases by way of entitlements or by way of permits, either at GWP, Public Works, Fire, or especially CDD, using their credit card to pay, and ultimately, the city is picking up a cost, a merchant fee on that. And again, based on council priority in the past, those, those activities that accrue private benefit, you would seek to receive full cost recovery. Parking fees is an, an item that came up as well, and there really is no right or wrong answer on these, because the, all the money from the parking fees goes into the, the parking fund for other parking services, parking improvements, parking investments, what have you. So, certainly is not a general fund driver, but it animates the desire of the Public Works Department to try to get greater turnover on the Brand Boulevard spaces. That is the prime real estate, and right now, with an occupancy in excess of, I believe, 97%, that mean, on Brand Boulevard, our goal is to increase the cost of parking on Brand Boulevard while marginally and ultimately flattening out what the cost is for off-street parking, the surface lots, and ultimately making the, the garages, the public parking garages, more attractive for long-term parkers. That way, you get greater turnover on Brand Boulevard.
So, I have a question. Do we still have leaseholders going into the public structures, car dealers and that sort of thing?
Yes, we do.
Because if we're going to push people into those lots for the 90 minutes free parking, we've got to free up more spaces, because right now, some of those lots are getting awfully crowded during peak hours.
That's true, and, and so that's why you see on the monthly parking at the public garages, we will go from 40 to 50 dollars, which generally hits the, the auto dealers, and brings that cost into alignment with what they're being charged in private parking structures around the downtown.
But do we know for a fact they'll move out? Because if not, we're going to have a real problem.
The, I think the, the idea is that if we're the same cost and we're further away, they'll likely go where they can get a better deal, especially if they can negotiate it as a private transaction versus having to do everything according to the city's, according to the city's rules, which apply to everybody evenly. So, I do think you'll see relatively fewer dealers parking in our garage, and thus opening up spaces, especially as you see it in the holiday shopping season.
Can I suggest that we consider raising that fee first, seeing how it works before we change the other fee? Because if we raise the other fee and we have more people coming into the lots, and if for whatever reason, those other leaseholders don't leave, then we're just going to have a disaster in our downtown. And I'd rather do one and then the, when we real, when we definitely know we have the spots, then look at the other one.
This has been the debate among councils, so, and that's why we're here today, is to take direction from council, heading into next week.
Mr. Najarian? Let me add another thought to that analysis, and we all love our car dealers. They're certainly the second, either second or third largest sales tax generator for the city. But when we talk about parking, I think there's a, you know, the premise when we set parking rates for the public, is that those rates are going to turn over, that someone who even uses it on a monthly basis is going to be in at eight and out by five, they're not going to have, you know, spaces and spaces just, just blocked out continuously 24/7 the way the, the car storage is. So, maybe it's important to add a premium to that monthly charge, different than what a usual monthly user is charged, because of the, there's no turnover with those, those car dealers. With a regular monthly user, or anyone else that's using it on a transient basis, I guess, there's a lot of turnover. You can actually put more cars in the garage than there is space for, because people aren't there at the same time. So, with the car dealers, boom, I'll, I'll take the whole garage. What if they came in and said, I'll take the whole thing?
I got to give our, our parking folks a lot of credit. They do manage it, especially at different times of the year, so we will generally roll back on the auto dealers come the holiday shopping season, and they do stack the cars. Usually, they'll put them in the basements where people don't generally like to park, the parking of last resort are on the highest levels. So, I, I think we have a good answer for economizing the parking spaces, but truly, if the council is not of a mind to, to make the movement on either Brand Boulevard or the surface lots, I, I certainly, we take your, we take your direction.
And my, and the second comment is, I, I think it's almost, it, it's not really fair to include those parking rates in our budget discussion, because the amounts, we're not doing it for budget, as, as you mentioned, we're not doing it for the, the income and the revenue that it's going to generate, it's to keep those rate, keep those spots open, and we saw what happened on Brand Boulevard when we metered it before it was impossible to get a spot, then we put it in, albeit a dollar an hour, and all of a sudden, spots were opening up. If you wanted to go to Portos and carry that cake to your car, it was worth it to pay the, the short-term fee.
Right.
So, if we are getting booked, common, you know, supply and demand analysis would, would dictate that you increase that and let those people who have a greater value at that parking spot pay, rather than those who may be, eh, for two bucks for lunch, I'll go to the Orange Street Garage and get the free parking for 90 minutes, rather than, than pay it upfront there. But the guy that's got those two cakes, man, I'll, I'll pay $5 for that spot, you know, to get into the car without mussing up the frosting.
No, I think that, that's, that's an excellent point, and I think that's, animates what, what we're endeavoring to do, again, and also understanding that council has been anathema to doing very significant increases all at once, for even the reasons that Council Member Friedman had indicated, that if you do it all at once, and it's kind of a sticker shock, even if it is going from a dollar to 225, for example, that would be, that, that probably is too much of a shock to the system. So, if we're going up from a buck to a buck fifty, we put one foot in the water and then the other, and we see where it goes. But again, certainly, this is, we always talk about, when it comes to fees, this is where the council gets to set policy. On the, I'd be remiss also if I didn't note that on the deal, on the, the le, not the leases, the arrangements with the parking auto dealers, those are not long-term leases. The city has the right to sever those at any time, but I do, as Mr. Najarian indicates, you, we have to be, we strive for balance, because the auto dealers, whenever, they, they take the parking of least, that is least desired, and they're there, as you point out, they're there 24/7, which means we're getting, you know, at least the, that monthly revenue from them, and in the times when the parking structures aren't full, that does benefit us. And so, we constantly strive for balance. But again, I don't know that there's any wrong answer here, it's, it's a function of what is it that you would like us to move forward on?
And a quick question on that, Nadia. How many parking spaces do the dealers need on a monthly basis? What's the average number that they occupy?
I would guess, and maybe get it wrong, Rubik, do you have an idea off the top of your head? I don't see Tad in here.
I mean, each dealer that I've spoken to says they can easily use a couple hundred spaces.
I, I would tell you that the dealers could probably, especially at our pricing, eat up all of the spaces without batting an eye. And so, to the extent that, and that is why we are looking at trying to build parking structures at the transportation center, because, and basically, charge off the debt service, whatever it would take to build those, onto the auto dealers, to create more capacity in the downtown. But do you know how many are used, Rubik, today?
Mr., Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, Mr. Ochoa, I do know, and we have done the survey, there's a demand for 3,000 vehicles throughout the city. They use a combination of city-owned parking structures and privately-owned parking structures. But like Mr. Ochoa mentioned, we trying to keep a balance. Recently, we have reduced the, the number of the cars that we house in our parking structures. It ranges, I, I believe, right now, we have maybe four to five dealership at an average of 100 to 150 vehicles each dealership.
So-
That's it, thank you.
My question is about the, the funds, the parking funds. So, you're saying that we don't have, we're not actually trying to build a parking fund?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Because, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking like we could perhaps use that money for building a parking structure-
Correct.
Because certainly, we're going, we're going to be in need of that.
Absolutely, my, I'm, if I misspoke, I'm sorry. We're not, we don't, we don't use the parking fund basically to, to drive the, the general fund. With the parking monies that go there, ideally, we're going to make investments in parking, modernizing parking, depreciating the structures, and, and hopefully, building another structure. We probably would like to build at least one more in the downtown.
Well, I, the reason I'm saying this is because with the opening of the restaurants that we just had a preview for last week, it's, and, you know, other structures that are coming in, certainly seems like we may be in need of that in the future. Are you able to disclose how much is in that fund right now? I mean, do we know?
Boy, off the top of my head, do you know, Bob? If you allow us, we'll, we'll get back to you-
I just, okay, that's fine.
As we sit here in this session, I just don't know-
Okay, no problem.
Oh, there's Armin.
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, for parking fund, as of March 31st, we have close to 6.8 million dollars.
Okay, good. Just start. Thank you.
So, if the council, I, I would, it sounds as though going to the, the 50 dollars for the increase monthly has some consensus, but with the on-streets, it sounds like it's still an open question. The daily maximum from $6 to $9, this is primarily impacting the office workers in the downtown, and that, that idea of going from six to nine is part of the strategy to, to- And that, that idea of going from six to nine is part of the strategy to, to, to get the public structures to, to increase the, the daily maximum, but still be very competitive and below what the private structures are paying, so that we don't end up in a situation where office employees, rather, if they can't park in their own office parking structure, they still feel comfortable parking in our parking structure, as opposed to parking out in the residential neighborhoods that surround the downtown. So nine dollars is still well below what the privates charge. It is more than what we charge, and we would like to see that number increase. But again, I think that, as well as the brand meters are open questions, as well as the, and the brand meter's open question for the council. We would ask to take the off-street parking, the surface lots, from seventy-five cents to a buck, if only for sheer convenience. The, the complaints that people get because they aren't carrying around seventy-five cents, let alone a buck fifty, or whatever the case might be, a dollar is a bit easier to manage just from, from that standpoint. But again, it's council's pleasure. If left to, staff recommendation?
What?
We're recommending six to nine, one to one-fifty, seventy-five cents to a dollar. But we would ask for your direction.
Do, do you need for us to give you that direction right now and, or in a consensus?
It would be helpful today because a, a week from now, we'll have the hearing, and we'd like to present full information.
Okay, okay.
So we can come back to this by the end of the presentation, so you can let it stew for maybe a few minutes more.
How much of fiscal impact on this, what is that?
Six hundred thousand dollars all-in on the parking revenue. If you were to approve everything at staff recommendation, would be about, that's right, Armin, six hundred?
Yeah.
Six hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
A year, okay.
But if we raise the, the lease parking for the auto dealers?
That's about a hundred thousand of it.
Oh.
Yeah.
With the raise?
Yeah, all in there, right.
But if we lose them, then you're not generating the revenue.
Correct. Right. The cost drivers here primarily are gonna be those first two items, the garages and the buck to a buck fifty. Because again, the, the, it, it doesn't sound like it's a lot, but the activity that we get on Brand and the, the occupancy rate of, I wanna say it's ninety-six, ninety-seven percent, it is tough to find a spot on Brand. Now, you can say, well, going from a buck to a buck fifty isn't going to curb anyone's behavior, and I'd be inclined to agree with you, because it's fifty cents. But if it's fifty, we're recommending fifty cents because we think that if we went from a buck to two dollars or two-twenty-five, people would be up in arms. This is a way of, of, as you've seen with other fees, easing our way into it. But we can, we can come back to this item as you think about it and give us comments at the end of the presentation.
Is council ready to, to weigh in on this, or would you rather?
I'm ready, but whatever the council.
I'm ready. I mean, I, I've, I've gotten a couple of emails of complaints of people who feel that this is about, you know, nickel and diming the public and getting more money, but really it's about freeing parking spaces up and, and encouraging people to go into the lots if they're there for an hour, two hours, so that those spots remain available to people who are running into Portos or running into a store and, and really don't wanna spend ten minutes getting into a lot when they're doing a five-minute trip into a, into a bakery. So if it has that result, which I think definitely going to the metering did, I remember before we metered, it was hard to get down Brand because people would just cruise up and down Brand looking for those free spots, and then they would stay there all day long, and you just couldn't get a spot. So it's helped, but I see it again. I see that it's starting to really jam up again, so. It's the right time, and, and when people realize that there are several public lots on Orange and on Maryland that are free for ninety minutes, and the Americana during the day is, I think, free for ninety minutes.
The first night, yeah.
First ninety minutes is free during the day on the weekdays, so that's also available to people. And I think that, you know, it will save money if they'll go into the lots with this.
So when does, when does that nine dollar kick in? After how many hours that nine, nine dollars, nine dollars kick in? It's four hours, after four hours?
Rubik.
Because first ninety minutes is free, right, at the, in the structure?
So it's a dollar an hour?
Correct. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Larpetian, yes, it is a dollar an hour. So ninety minutes is free. Anything above and the ninety minute will be a dollar an hour. And also, we sell passes for daily use. Or someone who has left it overnight, I shouldn't say overnight, comes in and leaves in the evening, regardless of the number of hours, the total maximum will be nine dollars.
Okay, so if I, if I parked there for four hours, I pay for two and a half hours?
Correct.
Yeah, because ninety minutes free.
Park there fifteen, you pay.
Then the two and a half hours is two, two dollars and fifty cents because it's a dollar, a dollar an hour.
Correct.
So if I park at the, at the meter, it would be six dollars. Okay.
Yes, Councilman, but, but if you left your car there for twelve hours, the maximum we can charge is nine dollars.
Plus at the, at the meters, you can park only two or three hours.
At a time.
Per block at a time, so that's another. Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Garpadin, you have a runway in? Are you okay with the, the parking fees?
No, I'm okay with it because this is basically giving people incentive parking structures and.
Okay. Mr. Snanian, Councilmember?
I share the sentiment.
Okay, I think the, it seems to be a consensus that we are.
Yes, ma'am.
All for the raises.
All right. Hustling right along, this is a matter of cleanup. Council had seen in your, in your briefing booklets, this item, just by way of a mistake, was left out. This is a commercial service permit fees for electric. The current fee is one eighteen, full cost is three hundred and sixty, forty-four, and in keeping, as I've mentioned previously, marching towards full cost recovery, especially on commercial developments where there is a private benefit, we are asking that you increase this to two hundred. That would be consistent with the other fees that were in this series that you will see in your booklet, for whatever reason it was simply left out. With respect to historic preservation, this generated a great deal of discussion last time. The current total fee, all-in with the technology, technology surcharge that applies today but will not apply in the future, because we baked that into the overall cost and brought down the costs of those fees that are applicable to that surcharge, is fourteen seventy-nine, seventy-five. The city council had asked for different strata, different layers, that we got cost recovery at twenty-five percent, at fifty percent, at seventy-five, a hundred percent. That is what, that is what the, the cost recovery rates are. You can see on the bottom of this present, or on the bottom of the slide, what the average loss to the city is versus what the average tax savings is. The average savings to the applicant is about eight thousand dollars, according to our records, and the loss to the city at one thousand is effectively a representation of our share of the property tax dollar. Total revenue lost to the city from our Mills Act, because we really don't have relatively many of them for a city our size, all-in is about seventy-five thousand. So again, council gets to make policy as to what behavior, what activity you hope to encourage by way of cost recovery.
And then what do people typically pay in, to, to be prepared for Mills Act application? So what are people on average paying for the historic report, for whatever background information and research they're doing?
Let me bring up.
Because we've gotta take that into account, too. People don't just walk in and pay a planning fee and, and be done.
And Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilmember Friedman, it varies. We see one particular consultant doing a number of reports, although on some occasions, I think applicants do their own work, so they're not paying a consultant. I would guess they're paying, you know, a few thousand dollars to have that consultant prepare those reports. If they're paying more than five, I'd be really surprised.
Okay. About two thousand.
Yeah, that would be my guess, probably around two thousand.
Okay, thank you.
But you say some, some of them don't use a consultant, some of them.
Yeah, you have some people who own properties and they're amateur historians. They do their own research and prepare their own application.
And also, they can get some, some help from our, our historian planner, right? Jay Platt, he can, he can, he can help.
We guide, we guide people into how to prepare a application. That means the questions we know our historic commission will ask, but we do not prepare applications on behalf of applicants.
Oh, I understand.
The Historic Society, some members have recently started preparing applications on behalf of applicants, and I believe they have some grant funds they've been using to help offset those costs for property owners.
What, what exactly is it that drives up this cost? Is it the number of hours that have to be put into?
In terms of the overall recuperation, yes.
Yeah, well, the seven thou, the seven thousand, almost eight thousand dollars.
Correct, correct. That's our staff time plus preparing both a presentation and staff report to the Historic Commission, and ultimately to the city councils, so that's staff time.
But are you, are you including staff time at the Historic Preservation Commission?
Yes.
Because they're there regardless of whether they have a Mills Act application. They might be talking about all number of things, right?
Correct.
So how do you decide what amount you're putting towards a Mills Act application?
Well, we've, as we've done a number of these, we simply average out our cost according to how we calculate any sort of cost recovery and, on fees.
They would plug that into the fee study, that accounts for that time, the cost and the overhead, and it, that's the, the number that gets spit out.
So if you have a Historic Preservation Committee meeting and it lasts an hour?
Sorry.
Then, and you have one Mills Act application, and maybe it's twenty minutes, you're taking that twenty minutes and you're, you're sort of billing your staff time.
Correct.
But the staff is, they're doing work anyway during the day. I mean, whether they're in that planning commission or they're doing something else, they're still doing work. And they're gonna be in the planning commission regardless. They'll be in the HPC meeting regardless because maybe they're talking about window replacements, maybe they're talking about.
Potentially, yeah. But I think that's reflected in the cost study itself, so those employees that would be there regardless are gonna have less of their, less of their relative time charged to that function, as opposed to that planner that is working on that application and otherwise wouldn't be at that meeting. So not everybody works on the application the same amount of time. A planner, an associate planner may spend X number of hours. Alan, as the deputy director, maybe spends a tenth of, of an hour. And that gets divvied up, applied the overhead and put into the fee. So the, the cost that we were recommending is at thirteen hundred dollars in, in consideration of previous council direction. That is below the twenty-five percent threshold of nineteen twenty. If you want to take into account the cost that the applicant incurs, as, as you've described, Councilmember Friedman, arguably, you could say that that two thousand plus whatever level of cost recovery should not exceed the seventy-six eighty-one, which is the fully burdened cost to provide the service.
Last question. How many, what is the batting average for applications versus acceptance?
Most applications that come in get recommendation from HPC. If we see five to six applications a year, maybe one of them gets denied by HPC. And if it gets denied by HPC, typically, the applicant withdraws their applications. The city council never sees those.
Right, but do they still pay a fee or no?
Yes.
So, but it's more than that. We, we probably get more than five a year at this point, right?
We get between six and eight a year is kind of our average right now.
So between the six and eight, and say one person pays the fee but doesn't end up getting the Mills Act.
Correct. And they can request a fee refund. We proportion it out because if we didn't spend time preparing a city council report because they withdrew the application, some portion of their fee would be refunded.
So the fees for Historic Preservation Commission as well as the council, council meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not just for Historic Preservation?
Correct. It's a, once, yeah, it's the full fee.
All, all-in, okay.
But they still run the risk of having to pay several hundred dollars and not get the Mills Act?
Correct.
So do we have anyone on council that would, is interested in raising that fee from the, what are, what are you recommending?
Yes.
Nineteen, this is coming, or you're recommending?
The staff recommendation was thirteen, if, on page sixty-six.
So you're saying to lower the fee. Right now it's fourteen seventy-nine.
Fourteen seventy-nine is?
Correct, because the, the cost is, that, that's the total current fee plus the surcharge. That surcharge is now gone. And so at this point, we are looking at thirteen hundred dollars, yes.
Okay.
I would like to raise it, if you're asking where I'm at.
I am.
I'd say seven thousand is a nice round figure, giving a little bit of a discount to the owner of a, of a subsidy, let's call it.
Well, I, I, my feeling is, if I could, that seven thousand's a little bit high, especially if they're gonna hire a consultant. Does any, Mr. Snanian?
I think, I think seven thousand is a good number. It's a fair number. Remember, we're, we're deciding these fees based on fairness in many respects. Fairness to the city, fairness to those that have to pay those fees. Here, we're, it seems like most of the time, at least eighty percent, ninety percent of the time, we're creating the opportunity for a significant benefit to the individual who gets the service. And the average tax saving, tax savings of eight thousand per year, you can multiply that by multiple years, X number of years, it's a lot of money. So to ask for seven thousand dollars on a service that's costing the city seven thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and eight cents is more than fair.
Friedman?
Well, I'm really against raising this fee for a few reasons. First of all, when somebody does a Mills Act contract and lists their property on the historic register, they're then subject forever to the highest level of review and the most restrictive land use. So maybe you list a craftsman house, maybe your craftsman house is thirteen hundred square feet, maybe you're on a ten thousand square foot lot. When you go to sell that property, even though the property taxes are gonna be capped, that's the incentive to get somebody to buy that property who is not interested in tearing it down. Because if you tore that house down, and we see this a lot in Glendale where there's an older house, and these are all old houses, you can make a lot more money by, by tearing your house down and building something large, or something different, or something that doesn't take as much money to maintain, because older houses often have a lot more maintenance. So you're reducing the property value often quite significantly by listing your house on the historic register. That's the whole reason the Mills Act was set up, was to give people an incentive to maintain and preserve these old houses when the market forces are all out there telling people that you'll make a lot more money if you tear this property down. The other reason that you're getting this property tax rebate is because we, when you go into that contract, there, you, you get that property tax because you are giving now back to that property in terms of maintenance. And very often, we require people to swap windows out, to spend quite a lot of money in construction to restore old properties in order to get the Mills Act. It's not always the case that someone walks in and then, then the, and the HPC says, "Great, here's your Mills Act contract and you don't have to do anything." Most of the time, it comes with conditions, often quite severe conditions, that they remove awnings, that they tear down additions sometimes, that they do all kinds of work to that property. And the bottom line is that these older houses take a lot more money to maintain than a newer house, because you can't just put vinyl windows on them, you can't just do, you know, take off the old wood siding and put it in vinyl siding or spray stucco on it the way you might be able to with another property. You're, you're listing it on the historic register with the promise then of maintaining all of that historic fabric. So that's the whole purpose behind doing this. We're talking seventy-five thousand dollars a year in revenue loss in a general fund budget, you know, that if you include GWP, is almost a billion dollars a year. It's nothing in terms of tax revenue. It's almost nothing. And what we get in exchange as a community is we get historic properties saved. So by raising the fee, you are creating a disadvantage, a disincentive for somebody who might not have the money to pay that. That's quite a lot of money, seven thousand dollars. Even fourteen hundred dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, plus maybe a two thousand dollar consulting, consultant report on top of that, can be prohibitive for somebody who then is looking at a house that maybe in a few years they'll be selling. Maybe they're gonna retire and move to a condo somewhere, or new apartment in downtown Glendale, whatever it is, and they're thinking, "Now my house will sell for a lot less because nobody can tear it down, nobody can alter it or do a giant addition on it." So they're really taking a big hit a lot of times, and that's the reason we don't have more of these applications. What were we told, we're getting between five and seven applications a year? If this was such a huge benefit and so easy to get and so underpriced, we'd be getting five to seven of these a month, and we're not. So I don't know why we want to make it harder when we really want more people applying for this and not less people. So I'm gonna ask my colleagues to reconsider. I think it's really the wrong signal to be raising this fee. We are not, people are not coming in droves to get this because of this huge property tax benefit. It's a great benefit, but we're having to beg people to come in with these applications. So this is really the, the wrong signal at the wrong time.
I can just add something. The fact of the matter is that someone else, which means the rest of the city subsidizing that cost, that's, that's necessary to process these applications, and it's fundamentally unfair to ask other residents of the city to subsidize the cost of a service that ends up in a windfall in the form of significant tax breaks to those that are, that are fortunate enough, which sounds like it's eighty, ninety percent of the applicants, to, to get the Mills Act. So therefore, we shouldn't be passing it on to others, and they should bear blind share of the, of the cost associated with it.
Well, I'm not sure that the Historic Preservation Society knew that this was on the menu for today. And I think even if we give direction that we, before, we're not adopting this today, So when this comes back, I do hope that they come and make their, uh, you know, and weigh in on this issue because I think it's very important. I think, I think it's undeniable that the whole reason this is there is because listing these properties is not just a benefit for that homeowner. In fact, sometimes it's a, it's the opposite of a benefit. It's financial, it's a financial hit for them in terms of the future value of their property. What it does do is it preserves those properties for the whole community so that we have a historic, um, structure in our community, so that, that neighborhoods have integrity in terms of their historic patterns and that we all can benefit by seeing the history of our community reflected in its architecture. So it enhances neighborhoods, it enhances the community, and it's at a very, very little cost to the city.
Mr. Garpetti, would you like to say?
I have a question before I make my comments. That $75,000 is basically our share of the property taxes?
That's our, yes, the city's.
So that's the 13% of the, of the, the 100% that we get, basically?
Yes, right.
So basically, the total impact is about $580,000.
For the other taxing entity, sure.
Right. So it's not, it's not just $75,000. And I understand what, uh, Mr., Councilmember Friedman is saying. I think it's a matter of choice. A thousand dollars up or down for the city, I don't think it makes a huge difference. I think it's a matter of choice that when you want to file for a Mills Act, you know what you're facing, you know what you have to do on your property. And most of them, you know, I was on Historic Preservation Commission, most of them, they don't have that much work there. Some of them did, but most of them didn't. So, and I think the benefit that you get by, you know, just putting your property on the Mills Act, it's, it's, it's enormous. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay if you want to play with that number a little bit, but I think that, that, I don't want people to subsidize for, uh, anyone else. And I, I want to, I want to, uh, mention that we increased our fees on every application that, uh, planning gets, especially on design review. It was, I remember in 2006, it was about $500. Today is $5,000. So it went up tremendously. So I think because we couldn't afford not doing it because our cost is a lot higher than that. So this should be in the same, it has to be treated the same way, especially when you get, uh, your money back in a year or so. That's where I, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Okay. Uh, well, I, I feel that, um, in the spirit of, of our historic properties and our neighborhoods, that we are trying to create an atmosphere of encouragement to these homeowners with the, the, you know, potentially historic, uh, resources that, you know, in their hands. So I would, I would not be opposed to raising the fee because I know that we've raised a lot of them and, and again, it's only fair. I don't know that we, I, I am for raising it to the complete $7,000 or almost $8,000. Uh, I would be, um, fine if we raised the, the fee to 3,000, 4,000. Do I have a bid? Uh, I, I just don't want to, to discourage. I want to encourage, continue to encourage homeowners, uh, to apply for the Mills Act and to restore their homes. And I, I feel that if we, if we come down on them, this is like a mallet going down up to $7,000. It really is.
Let me, let me address that issue just a little bit. If I thought for one second that raising it to 7,000 is actually going to discourage anyone from applying for the Mills Act, I would never support it. I am certain that amount is not going to discourage because the $7,000 or $8,000 average per year saving is a per year saving, which means that it's, the saving is going to continue in perpetuity. It's still a, a winning proposition for anyone who's subject to it, who's, who qualifies for it and who has their mindset on getting the Mills Act.
Well, then why don't, can we look at it this way and do it in steps? Like this year, we do it 3,000, the next year we raise it 1,000 so that it's not a...
What if that results in a mad rush of applications, 50 applications, all trying to squeeze themselves into the next year? And, and how do we make the determination as to who actually gets to get processed and who doesn't?
Well, the thing is, even with the, the one, the 1,400, 1,300, we only have five that, or five or six that apply. So I don't see that with 3,000 or 4,000, we're going to have a rush of...
Well, now that, the word is out. Now that they know that, that they're going to increase every year, there will be a rush. They, there's only four or five applications because people didn't know that, you know, they, people probably didn't have any idea that this is how much it costs for the city to process it. When was this, this issue last discussed as part of a budget?
It seems to, to come up to different degrees, kind of almost every, every year about how much should it be, um, invested in, how much should it be subsidized? Never probably to this, uh, to this degree. But, um, it, I, I can recall talking about this to some degree or another almost every year. And it's something council wrestles with because it is, there, there's a public benefit in, in maintaining the, the legacy of, of the richness of the architecture. And there's a tremendous private benefit of folks receiving the subsidy on their property tax bill. I think to your point, uh, people that buy vintage homes oftentimes are aficionados of those vintage homes and they're not really buying it for the tax benefit, but it does facilitate the ability to appreciate and invest in. So it's, you can make a pretty good argument either way, I think.
I, I mean, for the last three years, previous three budgets that have been a part of, I don't remember discussion, it may have been some kind of telepathic communication between us, but as far as an actual robust discussion on council.
Not to this degree, no.
I don't remember one.
So, um, it seems that we're a divided council on this one.
It seems you are. We, let us, let us press on and then we may come back at the end for, for some decision because what you'll see on the 24th is whatever the, the majority of the council wants to see, unless you're ready to give us that direction now. But, uh, and that will be presented, um, as part of the 16, 17 budget on the 24th. You could still change it on the 24th. Heck, you could still change it on the 14th. But, uh, we would, we would bake it into the, the budget report for next week, whatever the council's decision is. Did you want to finalize the discussion now or do you want us to press on?
Let's just do seven. Put it down and then let that be the standard with which, assuming there's three votes.
The next meeting, I mean, you know, please. So we can, let's put a number up there.
Yeah. How about 4,000?
Well, I'm not for raising it. Uh, I think that there's a public benefit here and people are not rushing in to do this and we're going to discourage people even more. And we're trying to get people to do this, not try to hinder it. I mean, if there was a rush to have 30 projects in the next few months, that would be terrific. That would be great. Um, you know, we should only be so lucky. So I, I certainly would not support that.
I would just add, since it's a discussion at this point, the staff can bring back the, the report at the 7,000 number and then the council can have a formal discussion next week at the council meeting.
Is there any kind of information you can bring back that would help, um, kind of support $7,000 or, or not support it as far as, um, how much a homeowner would, would see in, let's say, 20 years if, under the Mills Act with the...
My understanding is that over time, the benefit does erode, um, as, you know, the, the assessed valuation, even under Prop 13, does begin to accrue, but it's very slow. And so that's why you see folks with, that have owned their home for a long time, they don't come in for a Mills Act contract.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
It's folks who are buying it now because the assessed valuation reflects the market. And so I don't know that we could give you that kind of analysis. I suppose we could tell you what other cities around us charge by way of cost recovery as a percentage. That may help you and help guide your decision.
Please, I would appreciate, would you?
I just want to, I just want to add to that, that most of the applications that we had was the homeowners who had their homes for a few short years and they purchased these properties and property values were really high. And, uh, this is a, a, a tax shelter, basically. Of course, they care about the properties. Of course, they want to preserve their historic resources. But $8,000 average is, some may have 5,000, some may get 12, 13,000 a year. It's not $8,000 across the board. So, uh, and most people who owns these big homes, that their property taxes are being subsidized by $8,000 a year, uh, they can, they can afford $5,000, $6,000 of, of application fee. I, I, I don't think it's going to discourage anybody because some of them are about over $10,000 a year.
Do we want to implement a fee waiver program? If it's the money that they have, let them apply, let them show their financials and say, I can't afford this application. And if that's the case, maybe we can extend them a loan to be repaid after the first or second year of the benefits that they receive. I mean, if you want to go that way, we can go that way, but I don't think that's the case. I agree with Mr. Sananian. These are, these are multimillion dollar homes or at least close to a million, at the very least, the ones that I have voted on. If I had to buy, make an offer on one of those homes, it'd be well into the, uh, the seven figures. Who are we subsidizing? These are folks who on their own should have a, a soft spot in their heart for preservation and the 7,000 application fee should not deter them if they really care about preserving , uh, homes that are entitled to Mills Act approval.
And one last question. How, what percentage of the taxes they get the break on? Tax, tax benefit, how mu, how much is it? Is it 80% break? Is it, was it, was it that they...
At this point, I, I couldn't tell you. I don't know, Alan, if you know off the top of your head?
No, I don't know off the top of my head and I think it varies by property because it depends on what they're paying.
Yeah, but it even takes 70% discount, 80% discount?
No, it's not that much. But we could get back to you with that information.
But we'll bring you back the actual formula that's on the assessor's website because it all even has to do with the, the rental value, uh, the market value. And, and so it's, it's kind of a fungible, uh, formula. That's why at the end of the day, what we end up looking at is what the overall savings is because the, the mechanism by which the savings is achieved gets rather complex and varied between properties.
So if it's 50%, if it's not 70%, if it's 50%, your tax break is $16,000 and your tax, property taxes are $16,000 a year, so you get $8,000 break every year. So your house is worth at least 1.9, $2 million. That's what, that's where it ends up with $16,000 as total tax, property tax, and then you get half of it, uh, basically created back to you. So these are not homes that, uh, these are in affluent areas. This is, these are, these are expensive homes that, that I think $5,000 or $6,000 application fee is not going to discourage anybody from filing. That's, that's my take on, on the numbers. I mean, I never looked at it that way, but when you come to think of it, I mean, these are not 3, 400,000 old homes that are deteriorating and we want to save them. Most of them are larger homes that the value is really high, so.
And I just heard 5,000 or 6,000. I'm listening.
We will, we will include the, the seven as part of next week's report and also identify means by which there could be achieved a fee waiver within legal parameters and, and practical administration.
Or, or some sort of a sliding scale based on the valuation of the home because what worries me or, you know, we're not seeing a lot of the applications for like those little modest craftsmen in South Glendale, you know? And we have houses down there that are eligible, but those people aren't coming in, whether it's that, the property is so much more valuable to tear it down and, you know, a lot of those are in multifamily areas, so they're just not willing to do it. Or they don't know about the program or they just haven't turned over yet, like you said. You know, they could be people who have lived there for 40 years, so there's no financial incentive for them to Mills Act it, but that could change when it turns over and, and a new family buys the home. So I think we should look at that too because I think that you're right for the, those large mansions, you know, in Northwest Glendale, it's, it's not a, it's not a disincentive. But that's, but those are, but those are only a fraction of the properties that are eligible for Mill, for Mills Act contracts. We're just not seeing those other ones. We're not seeing as many commercial, you know, which we have a couple, but we don't have that many. A lot of those owners don't understand that the incentives transcend the Mills Act, that they also get parking variances automatically. They get a lot of other benefits if they apply for the Mills Act. And we're certainly not seeing a lot of those more, those smaller modest homes.
Okay.
Something we can look into.
Yes, ma'am. So whatever number is assigned, we're saying, we all know next week Historic Preservation Society is going to come talk to us, which is, which is good. They'll have that number.
So can we look into something that's a sliding scale somehow based on valuation of the home or their current property tax burden or whatever it is?
This is it. It's telling us that the average is 8,000.
The average is...
That means, that means some are 5,000, some are 13, some are 13,000. So...
That's, that's an average, but if, if one of those smaller homes wants to come in, they're going to have to pay the same fee regardless then.
Well, that's what I was saying last, last time about design review fees, that an addition to a house is the same cost as 25, 30 units apartment building. So when we say we can, we can separate it because it's very difficult to determine based on the square footage. So let's, uh...
I, I, I would defer to city attorney as to whether or not we can differentiate the application of the law based on the relative values and attributes of the property. I just don't know.
We probably can. You can look at legally, you can do that as long as you're not charging somebody excess of what the cost is and that's not what's being proposed.
All right, so can you bring us that option back?
Sure.
For staff? I don't know what I'm looking at.
Mm-hmm. Kim?
Resessing that one?
Moving on to a very easy topic, condominium conversions. Council had asked.
But wait, there's more.
The fee that was identified, your fee study, uh, was at 10,460. That was close to, uh, the full cost recovery of 11,550. But it was requested to give a sliding scale in terms of the different thresholds. That way council could identify whether or not this is an activity that you wanted to try to encourage of taking apartments into condominiums. So you see what the different recovery rates are there. Again, 100% is the 11,550. Staff had recommended 10, 10,460.
What was the recommendation?
The recommendation was 10,460.
Oh, it's not there.
And, and so, yeah, the, the...
Why don't you lower it?
The, the amount you see here is inclusive of the tech surcharge, which we have eliminated and just taken the tech surcharge and baked it into the overall fees. So we actually dropped the fees by way of, of handling it that way now that we have a, a very good handle on what the tech needs of CDD are on a going forward basis. So there was no need to have a surcharge anymore. We could just take Brian Ganley's cost for the department and then apply it to the fees and ultimately reduce the fees. So, uh, here you see what it is today. Again, the amount that we were recommending, 10,460. And then you see the different strata at 25% cost recovery, 50, 75, 100.
Comments?
You want to? May I, may I just make a suggestion? Because I asked for this item. I, I don't know the magic number. I don't have the magic number in my head. But the, the issue is, the reason I brought this up is, uh, this is the only way that you can create affordable. Now, I'm not talking about affordable housing per se for, for low income families. This is entry level affordable.
Ownership.
Ownership housing. And, uh, the way that this was done a few years ago, it's not just the fees, the way that the rules were changed and the ordinance was changed, it just killed every project. Nobody can, uh, convert any of the, any of the units. You have nice apartment buildings that are 15, 20 units, they were built in late 80s, early 90s, and they have two parking spaces per, per unit of central air, nicely built, but they don't have that one extra parking for every four units as guest parking. And because that was required, instead of like, if you have 10 units, if you want to convert it, it will turn into six units or six and a half units. So nobody's doing it. I think that's another thing we have to look at, which is another discussion here, but just to give a little incentive for people to look into it, I think it's, it's the right thing to do because that's the only way you can create it today's prices. That's the only way you can create entry level.
Then, might I suggest then, because the, the holistic approach is something staff would wholly endorse, we are bringing back the condo conversion ordinance as part of South Glendale plan. So if, if the council were to make adjustments to the condo conversion ordinance and thus more readily facilitate condominium conversions, at that point, that might be a more appropriate time to talk about what the relative fee is. So at this point, the staff recommendation is actually a drop in what it is today, but we'll bring it back for further adjustment as part of the condo conversion discussion.
Because right now, nobody's applying for it, right? Because right now, nobody's applying for it, right?
Right.
How many applications we have last couple of years?
Very few.
Not many, right? Not even one, I think.
My fear about that, and I respect your view, and I think you have much more expertise in this area, I fear that, from what I understand, the condo conversions really haven't happened more as a result of the economic downturn, and people just didn't have the funds to buy condos, so everyone that was developing, building, building something, built apartment units, with the idea that someday when the market comes around, they are going to convert to condos. Now, is it that we're trying to encourage condo conversion, therefore we're going to do, lower the fees, or is it that condo conversion is going to happen? Now is the time, because the market has flipped, and us, by lowering these fees, all we're going to do, provide them is, again, the windfall and our loss.
To Councilman Garpetian's point, I think the city councils previous have basically set very stringent standards to make it difficult to convert these properties into condominiums.
Why is that? Was the policy rational?
That, I wasn't here, I couldn't tell you.
Well, let me tell you, this was a battle that I fought and fought and fought, and who remembers those days? Not many people here. This was a dogfight between a certain apartment building owners who saw an immediate opportunity to convert and obtain huge amounts of equity in the process by doing so. I mean, comparing the rents and the value of an apartment building at that time to an immediate conversion and selling off these units, several hundred, at that time, it was probably about $300, $400,000 a pop, was a literal goldmine for some folks. And they wanted to do it without the proper, with a different set of codes, with a more lax code system, such as the parking, there were storage issues, there were other issues as well, metering, things like that. And I hope we don't come back to this again, because this was a nasty fight. But the issue was that a conversion would leave standards, would leave units, living units, with less quality of housing than those that were originally built as condominiums.
And what about numbers? Wouldn't it take the number of living apartments down? That would not help us.
Which would drive up the apartment rents even higher.
Right, and it would take away houses.
I think that's why you would want to look at it holistically. And arguably, you could say that it's going to increase homeownership. On the other hand, it decreases rental stock. You could have some apartments, I don't think it's outside of the realm of possibility, that are affordable today, that what you see happening in other parts of the county and the state, you take those off the market because it's going to be converted to condos. So you could slice it lots of different ways, which would be my suggestion, to take a look at the ordinance in its entirety, and if we're going to make a change, then revisit what we charge.
You're removing rental units, but you're not removing units, right? So conceivably, you actually, you could, I mean, I don't know, I'm not the expert, but you could argue that by taking those people that are renting and having it available for them or for someone to purchase, you stabilize their housing costs.
No, but he is saying that we would eliminate some units.
Affordable units.
No, you don't eliminate units, you eliminate rental units, but you still have the same number of units. If 100 people, 100 families are living in that building, whether it's a condo or it's a rental unit, you still have 100 families living there. It's not like you're demolishing the building.
If they convert to condos?
If you convert to a condominium and it becomes unaffordable to the folks that are there today, conceivably, you could be eliminating affordability. But the number of units doesn't necessarily go away, and so that's why, to the extent that, you could slice it lots of different ways and look at other agencies, other cities to see how they've dealt with it, and ultimately chart your policy from there. I would think adjusting the fee before you have that holistic discussion maybe is...
I agree. And let me add one more thing to this conversation, is most of the tenants purchase those units, they become homeowners, because the way that rents are going, $3,000, $2,500, $3,500 for a two-bedroom unit, you can purchase a unit and your mortgage would be less than that. So you're not eliminating, yes, you're eliminating some rental units, but on the other hand, you're increasing affordable entry-level housing, which there is no any other way to create in the city. There is no any, I'm not saying just give up everything and, you know, Wild West and free-for-all, but have the ordinance the way that these people are living there. Either they purchase it or rent it, what's the difference?
Well, they may not qualify for a mortgage, that's the difference.
No, I understand. What I'm saying is, if they live in it today, and the parking is sufficient enough, the storage is sufficient enough, the square footage of the unit is sufficient enough, for them to rent it or own it, I don't think there's a negative in that. But this is a discussion for some other time.
I think it's worth exploring. I'll just, I don't have an opinion right now, because I don't know enough about it, but I'll just add that my parents, when they were renting, when I was a baby, when they were renting in New York City, they waited for years for their apartment to go co-op. A little different than condo, but they waited, they stayed in that building for years on the promise that they would be able to buy it at some point. And they ended up moving away, something like seven months before it finally went co-op, and the people who stayed there are now sitting in these like $5 million apartments, and, you know, they were desperate to get, and they ended up missing their opportunity.
Okay.
On to animal licenses. The other one that seems to get us a lot of attention from time to time. So you have the current fee, 39. Here are the recovery costs, 100% cost recovery, this is for unaltered dogs, $61, 25% would be $15, and then you see for altered dogs, those are spayed and neutered, it goes from $62 down to 15. And really, again, it's to what degree does the city council wish to encourage and subsidize this activity?
So I asked last time about the unaltered dogs, if that includes puppies, because it seems kind of unfair to penalize people for an unaltered, two-month-old puppy or month-old puppy, so do we know?
Yeah, I don't know that folks are coming in to get licenses for their, for puppies that young.
Okay.
So I don't think that that's occurring to any great degree at this point.
Not that it's a huge difference in fee.
Sure.
So the big debate is always at the kennel fee.
It's coming.
Yeah, so, so here we are at...
Yeah, what are we...
These are, yes.
What are we suggesting? What is the city suggesting?
The staff's recommendation here for the animal license unaltered is...
When you talk about dogs and altering, I think it should be free.
We're not altering the dog.
Is $45 is what the recommended fee for the coming year is, and for altered is $30.
And the current fee is 61 and 47, so we're lowering those.
So on the, the current fee is 39, and so it would be going up $6, and on the, same thing with the altered, it goes up $6, more or less, $5, if you'd like to effectively keep it the same, or if you'd like to decrease it or recover full cost.
I'm okay with recommended numbers.
$45 and $30 respectively for those two fees there.
Fine, fine.
I'm okay with that.
We're good.
$45 and $30, pressing on. Here, again, we see the three-year, I will tell you that the last two, I'm sorry, I'm looking ahead, on these ones here, the number is, three-year license for unaltered is 61 being recommended, so it's pretty well flat. The three-year for the altered is 50, so it's going up just a little bit.
Is that the one that's 47 right now, and it's going up to 50?
It's, that would be 47 going up to 50, is that right? Yeah, that today, current fee is, currently it's $52, I'm, no, I'm sorry, I take that back, 15, 16 fee is $40, we're saying go to 50. The 15, 16 fee is $40, and we're saying go to 50.
Okay, pressing on, billiard rooms. What you see here is the reduction in the billiard room application as opposed to the billiard establishment. So the establishment would be three or more billiard tables, à la Charles Billiards. A billiard room license is a location like a pub or a bar that has billiard tables as an incidental expense.
And what's the justification for this?
That we go and inspect the...
No, that's not the justification. Come on, this is because somebody thought that having a billiard table was an invitation to vice, so someone put this fee in there to discourage this vice. It's a recreational activity. You weren't here, a while ago, there was, there were all kinds of prohibitions against pool tables that I managed to get out of our city, out of our ordinances, but that was there at one point. So I'd like to get rid of that. I don't think that a bar that puts a pool table and needs a $300...
Well, so that would be another option for council, is that if you say that, give it a name, it's at one or two or three tables, is incidental to the use that is there already, be it a bar and grill, or a pub, or a pizzeria, or whatever the case is, you could say that we wouldn't do an inspection and track that activity.
Because collapsing pool tables are a huge source of injuries around the South Land. Why are we, I mean, to inspect a pool table, you know...
What is it that you inspect about a pool table?
I think that the, no, I think that observation is fair, that historically, you could argue that bedding goes on...
That's why they had the fee.
Yeah, but how does this address bedding?
You go and you take a look at the environment, you take a look at the establishment to see what's going on.
Meaning they're going to be like undercover?
No, but some places in this town, believe it or not, even here in River City, are, have, lend themselves to ill-gotten activities. And so, to the extent that the council has the discretion to say, okay, as part of the CUP, because it's a bar, we will be able to look into that activity.
But is that because of the billiard tables?
It's a, no, I think the attitude, and historically has been, it's a contributing factor.
That's why, they think that billiard tables are...
What do we think?
Come on, trouble in River City, there's a whole song about this.
Why don't we ask the chief, whether he has any comment on...
Careful, chief.
The influence of the billiard table.
Chief's like, keep me out of this one.
On additional levels of crime associated with a billiard table establishment versus one similar size without the billiard tables.
If I could provide some context of what we're thinking of in the future before the chief...
You're not the chief, I want the chief.
Tells you all about that. This is in Title V, and we actually, through code enforcement, would like to look at all of those, all of those things in Title V. And in consultation with the police department, certainly in this case, do we still need to do that? Do we still need to do the inspection for that? And as part of that analysis, we may be coming back with a completely different fee structure recommended for you. We just haven't done that yet.
So have you been inspecting the pool tables when you administer? What do you look for, and who knows what to look at on a pool table?
And how does that prevent gambling?
Yeah, that's my...
Just having the, you could argue it doesn't, but I think having the, I think you'd also argue that having an inspector come through and be able to walk in, take a look at what's going on, and have the, I wouldn't say necessarily probable cause, but have the reason to be there, does lend itself to some degree of law and order. Again, I think this being a historically very conservative town, you would see these types of light blue types of laws and fees.
Let's hear what the inspector has to say.
Hi, my name is John Brunell, I oversee the code compliance and licensing section. Yes, Chapter 5 is very old, it's been in existence for many years, and it has been revised in portions as issues have come up over the years. It does require a total overhaul, which we are in the process of doing, and we're working with the city attorney's office to do that. That being said, the code, as it specifies in black and white, requires those permits and licenses. A few years ago, Councilmember Friedman, this did come up, where we had a per-table charge as well, where we would go out and assess a particular fee per table, sort of like what we do with arcade devices. When we go out and inspect, we're just inspecting to take a look at how many tables they have. That's pretty much it.
Let me just say that two establishments that have pool tables, besides Charles Billiards, are the Adult Recreation Center and Pacific Edison Rec Center.
And you do not want to know what's happening in those two places.
So we think that these are so vices worthy that we want to discourage them by charging this fee, because you're clearly not looking at safety issues with your pool tables, correct?
We're not looking at if any tables are going to fall on somebody.
So if they're so problematic, then maybe they shouldn't be in our own city buildings. I just think this is nickel and diming, these businesses, and having pool tables is a very healthy activity for young people. It's, you know, it's a great thing to get people doing, it's a game, they can play it indoors and stay off the streets, so I just think we should get rid of it.
And I can't imagine an inspection stopping anyone from gambling.
And can I suggest that since we're looking at Chapter 5 code and trying to make that change, that perhaps we just omit this for now and let it come back?
Do you care to suspend them, or would you like to exempt those that have billiards for, billiard tables as defined as an incidental part of the business?
Because the big ones, you don't want to...
Yeah, of course.
Take the fee away from...
Say three or less.
Now, why is a, if a place like Charles Billiards is already being inspected as a bar, why do you need the additional fee for it to have the billiard tables?
Because I think if you look at the bar and the bar action, you're looking for specific activities related to that business operation. If you're doing the pool tables, you may be looking for something entirely different, that's all.
And that we need these fees. I just think that this is, you know, this is just a way of trying to discourage...
Did we establish exactly what you're looking for when you go in to see the table?
No.
What are you, what do you look?
Again, when we go out, it's a license or a permit, so what we're looking basically for is quantity and the numbers.
With what frequency do you do that? With what frequency do you do that?
Whenever a permit is pulled, we do it on an annual basis, if it's an annual permit, just like kennel permits, it's either once or a year, or once every three years, per se. Again, like I'm saying, is the code is very old. We are in the process, so we've already gone through some initial steps already, but we are looking at a revamping of the entire Chapter 5. There'll be a lot of stuff we will be looking at eliminating, combining and consolidating, because under today's technology and concerns, they really don't exist as they may have existed back in 1950, 1960, 1970, per se.
I would certainly support eliminating or suspending this fee for any establishment that has two or less billiard tables. I think there's no reason to do this.
Well, I don't quite know why we'd have it, even if they have more, I just don't, I don't see the purpose.
For just going there once a year, I don't know what that, what good that does. So I'd be, I'd rather just eliminate the whole thing until we come back with the Chapter 5.
Same with me.
And also, one of our departmental goals is to bring that back to you sometime in the 16, 15, 16...
What is it that we're bringing back? What is it that we're bringing back?
The overhaul, our overall code enforcement program is being upgraded, updated.
Right, so regardless of upgrading it, we need to have inspections then. For two or less, I'm okay with it, but...
No, two or less, I'm okay with it.
It's a big, big business that has 20, 30 pool tables, you need to have inspection.
But why? Do we have a place like that that has 20?
Charles Billiards, but why? What do they, in other words, why would they be treated differently than any other business of that size?
For the same reason that they go to arcades.
The inspector goes into the establishment, trained inspector, it's one of our city code inspectors, they make observations of any kind of code violations around that particular area, and if they do suspect that there is, in this case, illegal gaming, they can refer that to vice narcotics, and they would.
But vice narcotics, the police can go in there anyway, whether or not there's an inspector coming once a year. If you have a, any establishment of the same size, if you have a jujitsu or yoga studio, you're not inspecting there once a year. This is targeting billiard halls because you think that there's, you know, some, I don't know why, even if there was something going on, you walking in the door with your little City of Glendale name tag is going to, you're going to, you know...
And again, understanding that he and his little name tag will go in and be able to examine the entire billiard area for...
No disrespect intended.
Well, I'm trying to say, you would go and look at everything for possible code violations, and if he or she expects that there is illegal activity going on, he can then refer that back to vice narcotics.
Okay, so I think I...
And I hate to speak ill of any operator, and I'm hesitant, that's really why, it's without any disrespect to the folks at Charles or anyplace else for that matter, but to the extent that it's, you know, it would not be unreasonable to presume that there is bedding, that...
Charles, I think it is unreasonable to think that.
It's unreasonable?
I don't, I think it's probably.
And if I may add real quick, too, is, the permitting process allows the different departments to coordinate with one another, too, is, you know, when the application comes in, it's just not licensing that's reviewing it. We do send it out to the fire department, if there's any type of occupancy standards or occupant law standards, they can review that, as well as police department, if they have had any type of calls for service, those can always be relayed to us and would make a determination whether or not we issued a permit.
Plus, it's general knowledge that it's there, and that you at least go out once a year, and so I'm, I think there's a consensus here.
Right, I think I'm okay with two and less, and when the ordinance comes back, if you want to eliminate it at that time, you can eliminate it at that time, it's not a problem.
So, Mr. Joe, I think that's the direction.
Thank you. Is Title V the one that covers, let's say, dance permits or amplified music permits? And you think, you say we'll be looking at all that?
We will be looking at everything.
Because, you know, I understand the analysis, I think it was a good discussion, and if we want to apply that to other activities as well...
Short of a Footloose kind of situation, yes.
Well, you know, dancing was forbidden at one time for unmarried women and all this other stuff, and maybe this is a holdover from those...
No, I think that's absolutely right. This was a very conservative town, and there are a lot of blue laws that were on the books... are a lot of blue laws that were on the books and now they're kind of light blue. And so we're, we are going through and what we are finding is that it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to go line by line. Let's go take a look at the entire function and bring that to the council and say, how would you like us to do this code enforcement? Because next to housing, I think you guys get more calls on code enforcement than anything else.
Well, at the very least, I think that the incidental billiard table thing should go.
Right. It is. It is. It's gone.
Kennel permits.
We're getting to the controversial areas here.
These are, these are the ones. You're lucky we left out news racks. Kennel permits, we're recommending full cost recovery, albeit with the 50% discount for qualified seniors, meaning low-income seniors, disabled seniors. But at this point, the staff recommendation going forward is the full cost recovery for the application, the permit. There you go.
And what do we consider as seniors' age?
I believe that's 55, yeah. 55? 65? 65, 62? Do I hear 70?
55 is in a 35.
Which one? 65. Which I hear is the new 40.
So if you buy, if you get a, you have a certain number of dogs in your-
If you have three or more in our fine city, as I will attest, you have to have a kennel permit. Regardless of the size of the, you want a sliding scale. We should have a sliding scale on dogs. Pound on dog.
How's that to do with the size of your house?
No, alas. Okay. With the senior and disabled discount, let us rather quickly take you through a series of hypotheticals. From the sublime to the ridiculous, we will talk about Measure N and alternative budget scenarios that we have, we are obligated, I think, to look at. Because as the question has come up, if Measure N does pass, if that's the decision of the voters, we have an earnest obligation to ensure that we can live by those city council priorities that we showed at the beginning and provide the best level of customer service that we possibly can. So, utility user tax, again, what is it? It's a consumption tax on water, gas and electric, something that is rather common for full-service cities here in Los Angeles County. Here you see the relative rates and their presence, existence in our surrounding neighbors. You've seen that slide. You've seen this slide. The, the per capita amount that we generate, the total amount, 28.25 million in the current fiscal year, 142 per resident, far less than that of our, of our neighbors, which I think, again, speaks to the demographic that we have by way of housing type and, and the housing stock, as has been discussed even here today. We have shown you this before, but with one wrinkle I'd like to point out. Here you see what is generated from the water, the gas, the electric. You see what the population estimates by way of Department of Finance, the annual per capita, the monthly per capita, the weekly per capita. As we've discussed, the Measure N with groups that have requested educational briefings, what we ultimately get to is this is about $30 per household per month in terms of what the, this portion of the UUT that is under question costs. I think it's fair to point out, and the reason why we haven't given a definitive number on that per month per capita beyond this 732, is because we don't quite know how much of that 732 comes from the business community. Because the utility user tax is levied on all utility customers, residential as well as commercial. So, for example, we know that about one-third of that electrical cost accrues to residential customers. And about two-thirds of that water cost accrues to residential customers. But we don't really know what the split is on gas or telecom. And so we've stayed at that $7.32 just to be conservative. So it could never be said that we're shading it one way or another. But it is worth noting, at least to you, the city council, that that 732 per month per capita is actually higher than what you'll see if you go home and take your utility bill out and try to do the math yourself. We've shown you this before and it is an interesting chart, you know, where the money comes from, where the money goes to. You see property taxes and sales taxes are the number one and two revenue sources for the city. The utility user tax, followed by the GFT, follow in number three and four respectively. In terms of where the money goes to, as a full-service city, you know that two-thirds of your costs, in our case 63%, so two-thirds roughly of your general fund cost is going to go to public safety. That's the level of service that is most closely associated with municipal government. That's what folks expect. But also in that same pool with public safety is community services and parks and libraries. Now, you'll note that Public Works and CDD are chopped up into many different departments. And so it's hard to say that we are in many different funds. So it's hard to say that, that they could, in their entirety, ever be completely removed from the city's operations. And although community services and parks and libraries do have other funds that animate their operations, the vast majority of their operations, as you've seen in the previous week's reports about conceptualizing what cuts could look like, are in the general fund. Internal Service Departments, bless you, are, are the, the folks in finance and HR and ISD, such that if you were to move forward with the proposed, not proposed, the anticipated potential cuts, while you're losing a great deal of functionality, you still have well more than 1,000, actually well more than, I think, 1,300 employees, even as you play out this discussion. And so you still need the finance, the ISD, the internal service departments to handle all the business of the city. So with that as a primer, we will remind you that we looked at, at the outset, looked at a variety, a spectrum, if you will, of scenarios. On the one hand, because two-thirds of the general fund is public safety and if the third largest revenue stream of the general fund was going to be severely impacted, to some degree, public safety was going to have to be impacted. Now, if you were going to take the cut entirely from the public safety departments, as they are two-thirds of the general fund, you could lose as many as 90 full-time employees, particularly sworn employees, police officers, firefighter, paramedics. Now, that seemed overly draconian. Council had said, well, even though we understand that's one end of the spectrum, I don't know that we would ever be willing to go there. But it was suggested to you repeatedly that if you went to LA County for public safety services, that miraculously somehow that panacea of operation for public safety services would yield the necessary savings. As the internal audit unit reported back to you, however, that simply is not the case. Glendale Fire Department is pound for pound cheaper than their counterparts, their partners at the county, which is no slap on the county. It's just a function of what the numbers are. And on the police department side, moving to the sheriffs, while achieving some cost savings by way of centralization of the non-s sworn functions, a great deal of our sworn personnel are going to be less expensive than the majority of their sworn personnel. And while you would achieve savings through reduction in management, where that differential kicks over in terms of the cost of those employees, not enough savings is achieved. And so if you did go to the county, not only would you have to lose control over your public safety departments, you still would have to make rather draconian cuts in order to make the $17.5 million up that would be lost by way of Measure N's passage. So on the opposite end of the spectrum, the entire elimination of both parks and libraries was discussed. Now, that too was seen as overly severe of a cut. And truly, I think in this community, folks simply just would not stand for losing the entire parks department, the entire library department. And so, we have for you, what I would view as, as the hybrid most likely scenario, if we were to lose the utility user tax. And understanding that the election is on the 7th, it gets certified by the county, let's call it 45 days later, we would be, if Measure N passed, back in front of you sometime in the summer, trying to prepare what you would see as the, the best way forward by way of making cuts or raising revenue or living on reserves or some combination thereof. So, option three would be a measured approach. You've seen from, I'll go in reverse order there, the library arts and culture department would eliminate the six branch libraries. We would keep Central, we would keep Brand Library and Arts Center open. We would close five parks facilities and reduce hours at everything else. And we would scale back severely on programming, eliminating nearly half of the departmental budget. In terms of fire and police, because it is so very difficult to secure fire and to recruit and train and field the sworn safety personnel, we would not be recommending to you at this point to eliminate existing sworn personnel, but rather to eliminate existing vacancies. And then, as we go forward in the coming years, eliminate through attrition those vacancies that do come up. What that means is that a great deal of functionality that exists in the police department now to provide proactive policing and some of the unique details and patrols and techniques that we utilize would effectively be abandoned. And with the fire department, we, the most notable loss beyond programs and services would be the browning out of fire engines in two different stations that would be rotated around the various fire stations within the city. Yes, sir?
A quick question on vacant full-time sworn positions for the police, police department. How many of these do we have? 12?
Six right now.
You have six?
And 14 vacant full-time firefighter positions.
So, but these are budgeted for?
These are budgeted today.
So, the position is there, it's not filled in yet, but it's budgeted for, so you're, so that's part of that $72 million? Those six, six positions?
That's part of that $72 million.
Police department's total budget?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
All right, that's $72 million. So there's six, six of, six vacant police officers' position and 14 fire department firefighters.
That's correct. And understanding that in the fire department, three different shifts, four people on the apparatus for a fire engine. So we would eliminate that fire engine. And then with the remaining bodies, you basically just wouldn't hire back folks when they're off. And invariably, we will have somebody off for training, for jury duty, for IOD, for sick, for given a name. So we basically, the net result would be browning at two fire engines in, in the system. And then last but not least, because these cuts don't get you to 17.5 million, we would backfill the difference with general fund reserves. So it looks like this on paper. You have the fire department budget, you have our police department, fire department, CSP, library. That's what those resulting cuts that I just described look like. And then the use of the general fund reserves would be almost $4 million, taking, taking that straight from the, from your savings account effectively. Which goes contrary to what your principles of fiscal responsibility are by way of paying ongoing costs with ongoing revenue. But that's a way to ease into these cuts because we have heard, as has been explained many times from folks in the community, that you're scaring us and you're scaring us for no reason. Show us how we could do this in an orderly fashion if push came to shove. And I think this is our best opportunity to do that if in fact Measure N did pass. The $2.5 million budget reduction in police effectively represents nearly $2 million. It would be the six full-time sworn officer positions. And what you would see is the, the cut either in programs that would be eliminated or all or in part. And if we ended up losing those bodies from the field services division, it would generally result in longer, in longer response times to calls for service. More specifically, you see on the left-hand side, the service level reductions. And I think that the most noteworthy thing here, or the theme of what you see here, is the drop in the level of service, the level of service to which Glendale residents have become accustomed to. We're not saying that the city would suddenly be engulfed in chaos, but all of the things that really make life in Glendale just a little bit more special than other places, you would start to feel that erosion. You know, the longer, the longer response time, sure. But responding to home alarms only when there's a verified crime, the responding to injury-only traffic collisions versus all traffic collisions. And as you know, this is a major issue because we do have a significant number of collisions in town. You know, you see as you go down the line, the last one, 1.8 sworn personnel as opposed to the, where we are now. And that is significantly below all of our surrounding police agencies. And what that will ultimately translate into is the diminution in that, that ranking of one of the safest cities in the nation as well as the state. In terms of the program, I'm sorry, Glenn?
Sorry. Quick question. Slide 35 says use our general fund reserves. What is our general fund reserve today?
I'm going to show you that in just a second and you'll see that. Walk through that. Yeah. Because it's important that, you know, you see the programs, again, especially everything from the community outreach and the community policing. But especially frightening is, you know, the, the loss of the AB 109 task force, or at least the, the reduction in that task force, because we were seeing that uptick in crime, especially property crimes throughout the region, not just in Glendale. With respect to the fire department, the reason why you have a higher savings in fire department is really just a function of the vacancies that they have today. There's no real rhyme or reason beyond that. Again, it's just a little bit more practical to eliminate positions that are vacant today versus to give somebody that you've trained as a paramedic a pink slip and then possibly have to call them back if the community decides to suddenly fund programs again. And so our goal is to do this in an incremental fashion as best we can. Here again, we see longer response times and the loss of our Class 1 ISO rating, which generally is going to translate into higher insurance cost, property insurance cost for property owners here in town. The, the browning out of, oh, let me get to the 0.75 sworn personnel versus 1,000 residents, that is down from 0.8, which you say, well, that's not too big a drop, until you realize what the numbers are for the surrounding agencies. Well, I think 1.14, 1.13 in the tri-cities. And you see that we truly, by way of the, the size of our community, geographically and by way of population, we are getting a tremendous amount of value out of the people that we had, primarily because of the innovation in the department, as it was described by Deputy Chief Rafino earlier today. The ALS, BLS program, the alternative delivery program, the community paramedic program, things that ultimately are able to maximize the resources that are present in the community. So a lot of that goes away because we just don't have the bodies to do anything more than the bare minimum. Program eliminations are being, would be felt in emergency services, most definitely, and certainly in the education side. The things that we do that are feel-good for the community would be among the first that would be sacrificed because they aren't essential to life safety in the immediate term. They are building better people for the long term, but we wouldn't have the ability or the time to do that. I won't spend much time on parks and libraries because you've seen these over the last two weeks in particular, but they are significant cuts. 21 full-time positions in parks, community services in parks, 52 FTE, the closure of facilities. This map, I think, says it all. The black dots are the closed facilities and then the gray dots are the facilities around the community that, that would experience a reduction in hours. But again, closed facilities, Maple Community Center, Spar Heights Community Center, Skate Park, Pacific Pool, and of course, Civic Auditorium. The parks programming, that all the progress that's been made would basically be abandoned over these last couple of years through the resurgence of our parks programming. And, you know, we would have to let that happen by way of the reduction, as well as the maintenance of the, the parks themselves. The weekly shrub maintenance going to monthly, weekly park turf going to monthly. And so, some cases, park fields, if they are able to be fenced and chained, they probably would be if only to mitigate liability. Just last week, you saw the impact on library arts and culture, 25% reduction as, as featured by the elimination of, or the closure of six neighborhood libraries. Those are the Library Connection, Casper Dugo, Chevy Chase, Grandview, Montrose and Pacific Park Library. In terms of the, the summary of all those cuts, you see on the bottom. But here, let me tell you about the general fund reserve. So if we were to use $4 million of general fund reserve, you see it there under option three. And as time goes on, the use of those general fund reserves go further and further and further. And you see at the bottom line, the projected fund balance dropping down to, from 35, almost 36% today to about 21% going forward. $42 million. Now, this council, again, has been well-served by fiscal conservancy. So you do have a healthy reserve. Your target is 35, your floor is 30%. Well, we are on our way to less than that if, if need be. I have heard from a handful of residents as to, well, okay, it looks like you can indeed find a way to live with, with these cuts. Because when you see the use of fund balance by fiscal year '21, '22, it's only $1 million. That's because the economy is improving, revenues are improving. And to some, that might look promising. I would submit to you, though, that this slide would not do justice to the diminution in service levels. You got to understand that if we were to live in this reality, 50 full-time positions are gone. The, a number of those are in public safety. You saw the 61 full-time equivalent hourly positions in the quality of life departments. And the fire station brownouts that would be rotated around our stations around the city would be just a fact of life. And so that's, that's really what is animating here. Now, if you- what is animating here. Now, if you chose to live by that rule of fiscal responsibility and not pay ongoing costs with one-time revenues, then you would have to drop more positions, and those positions would likely come from those public safety departments and get you back to those original, or close to those original numbers that we had described on the draconian end of the spectrum by way of police and fire cuts. So, you know, we have tried to be as absolutely reasonable as possible to show that we aren't, our job is to find solutions and to find ways to make it all work, but to suggest that you can make a cut and not fill an accompanying trade-off, I think this presentation, these slides would indicate. That just isn't valid. So, folks have also asked, okay, well, if you lose the UUT, but we don't want to lose the services, and we acknowledge that, we have to pay a cost for those services, how do we get new revenue in? You know, forgetting for a moment that it's probably easier to keep the tax that already exists, what we would submit to you is that the general fund reserves are there, they can be used, but again, that would be contrary to what your fiscal policy has been in the past. In terms of new taxes, as you know, general taxes require a majority vote. We would be looking perhaps at a business license tax or as local sales tax override. If you wanted to do special taxes, sometimes folks feel more supportive if they know precisely what the money is going to go for. So, parcel taxes or assessment districts for parks maintenance, or for libraries, or for other special services, those are possible, but they are more difficult to get, because they require two-thirds vote, as opposed to a general tax. Another opportunity that exists in our charter is the ability to increase the general fund transfer from GWP to the maximum of 25%. As we talked about last week and the week before, we're currently at 10%. It used to be at 14.7% of operating revenues. Today, it's at 10%. We've locked into that number, or that percentage, and we'll just float there as a general fund transfer. But yeah, and that generates about $21 million. Theoretically, you could increase, not necessarily double the general fund transfer and replace that revenue on a going-forward basis. I have to believe, however, that the folks that are suing you on the general fund transfer today would most assuredly sue you for increasing the transfer going forward. So, is it an option? It's an option temporarily until you get sued, but certainly it is within your ability to decide upon. Those are the various scenarios that we have, and at this point, I would submit to you that until and unless we have to make those cuts, and you hear from the community about those cuts, it's as much academic as anything else. But I do want the council to know, the community to know, that we aren't making this up as we go, that there is good, earnest thought going into all of the alternatives that exist, because whatever the voters decide is what the voters decide, and our obligation is to live within that. With that, this, again, is your third budget study session. You have the hearing on the 24th and the adoption on the 14th. We would be happy to answer any questions for the council.
I do, before I ask council, I do have one card, and I don't know if Sherry has stayed with us, but Sherry Stubbs, did you want to speak, please? Three minutes?
Sherry Stubbs, Far North Glendale. And I'm here, despite the dire potential consequences should Measure N pass, to keep completion of the Duque Magin Wilderness Park in the budget discussions. While acknowledging the consequences of Measure N, I'm choosing to ignore it. Additional facts and information in support of completing the park were provided to each of you in my May 16 email. In summary, we have shown you the strength of support for completion of the park by the number of petition signatures gathered, and I might add, gathered in a short period of time. We have shown you that residents, adults, and children alike, from a wide geographical area, and specifically including all areas of Glendale, use and enjoy the park. So, for what some may have previously termed an obscure facility, we have shown that it is not obscure at all, but it indeed is a well-used and enjoyed facility. We have shown you a valid written argument supported by these and other facts and documents. We don't believe there is anything that can invalidate the argument for completing the park. The desire is there, the facts and proof are there, the money is there. So, we again urge you to retain and reappropriate the currently existing funds, appropriate the additional $500,000 needed, as included in the May 10 proposed Budget Capital Improvement Program 401 category, and today, I believe, it is the pertinent slides are 12 and 14, and proceed to complete the Duque Magin Wilderness Park for the use and benefit of all Glendale residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stubbs.
When is the Duque Magin Park project coming back, the barn project, coming back to us during these budget proceeds, during the budget process? When are we going to have the ability to appropriate the money?
The money? Well, the $500,000, we have in the budget now.
What about to finish the barn?
That is, that $500,000 is in the budget today.
So, it's in the budget right now?
It's being recommended to you, that you'll hear next week.
Okay. Just so the public knows, because I've been getting a lot of emails about it, and so, right now, it's in the budget unless someone pulls it out of the budget. It's there. I would like to keep it in there.
Okay.
If I can, I have a comment. In the letter, Ms. Stubbs, I apologize if it wasn't your letter. The issue of getting signatures from children was addressed, and if, at any time, it came across as if I was actually suggesting getting physical signatures from children, I apologize for that. Obviously, I meant someone who speaks on behalf of those children, but more importantly, signatures or representations or something from children in those neighborhoods that are impacted by downtown development. That's what I meant, not physical signatures from children, not at all. So, thank you.
Just want to say something budget-related. I mean, I'm looking at these numbers. If Measure N passes, community services and parks, they are impacted the most, 44%. And if you look at the way this is structured already, or being proposed already, closed facilities, Maple Park Community Center, Spar Heights Community Center, Skate Park, Pacific Pool, which is used 500 times more than any other use that we have here in the city, and Civic Auditorium, all in South Glendale, Pacific Community Center, Adult Recreation Center, 28 parks gated, and the ones that they have restrooms or tennis courts, these are used by all residents. So, I don't want to go back and forth on the Duque Magin issue. It's not before us today, but we will discuss it next week. When is it that we have to discuss it? Last?
As part of your hearing, next week, yes.
We will discuss it next week, and I saw the petition, again. In that petition, it said, "Complete the barn." The barn is being completed. I'm going to keep repeating myself, so people will understand this. We allocated, appropriated $800,000 to finish the barn, the floors, the storefront, or the entry doors, the HVAC, and the gates they want to put in there. It's all going to be done. Let's open the barn and have programs in there, see how does it work. Then you decide if you want to spend $3 million in that facility. And all the signatures that was gathered, 85, 90% were from Tahanga. I had one from Los Gallos, which is up in Northern California, and I don't know what is it that they had to do with this issue, but maybe they can bring some funds from their own jurisdictions and try to complete this barn, if that's how it's being used. So, again, the barn is being completed, it would be completed. It's not that it's being left halfway done, but I think appropriating another $3 million, when, I'm going to say this again, Rock Haven is deteriorating, was wrong. That's something that we need to consider as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. That being said, thank you to staff for all of these reports on the budget and a lot of information. Thank you for the public for coming, listening. And with that, what's the next item, please?
We got some motion.
The motion.
We adjourn. Second.
Thank you. Okay. We are adjourned.